As you can stay in touch with our school district, our Facebook page is at West Carrollton City Schools. Westcarrolltonschools.com is our webpage and WC City Schools is our Twitter page. National Night Out is coming up. Some important dates, August 1. This is a flyer from Moraine and I unfortunately didn't get to attend the meeting this morning, but they have big things planned and we did this last year. It's a lot of fun. So if you have an opportunity, come out to National Night Out. And the school year begins August 16th, 2023. It'll be here before you know it. That includes Addison out there. She... And pride, West Carrollton pride. So we have employees that we recognize or citizens or just different people that we recognize with Pirate Pride Award. And somebody did something very extraordinary. Aaron Swafford, would you please come up? And Mr. Doug Hatcher, we were just speaking before the meeting, so he is going to tell you the story, Mr. Hatcher, as...
Good evening. You know, our transportation department takes a beating sometimes. Everybody complains about them, you know, not being on time, not being where they're supposed to be, but I beg to differ. Our transportation department, I will put them up against any other school district in our area. Our men and women who drive the bus is doing a great job of getting us from place to place. They drive thousands of miles every school year without incident. We almost had one, but thanks to Aaron and his quick action, averted a very, very bad, potentially bad situation. We were coming back from a game that we never played. One afternoon, coming in the back part of town, and I was in the back talking to the team and all I heard was "Hang on." Locked the brakes up and everything went forward. When I got back up to the front of the bus, I found out what happened. Tractors were coming. This was in the spring, so it's, you know, got farm equipment on the roadway. And somebody decided to pass the tractor coming head on into us. I didn't see it, but I heard about the video and with Aaron's account and my coaching staff, two feet was the difference of being potentially very tragic and/or arriving back to school safely. This fellow here saved us and we have a couple of our team members sitting in the front row, they can attest to that. They were both on the bus that day. So for all the beating that our transportation takes, we've had some drivers here in the crowd today. Thank you very much from coaches and staff because you guys are A number one. And on behalf of our program, I'd like to present you with a little bit of token of our appreciation. Aaron, you're awesome, man. Thank you very much.
I also have something to present to Aaron. It is a certificate for the Pirate Pride Award. And you also get a very special coin and a pen that you can wear. And I also want to comment too, this is not as good as Doug's story, but on Facebook, Aaron is always there, always making a comment when a student makes an achievement, always liking that comment. He follows what these kids do. He really is one of the employees behind the kids. Maybe the face you don't see, but our whole transportation department is behind these kids as well as teachers and aides in the classroom. So thank you, Aaron. Thank you to the whole transportation department and congratulations.
This isn't the first time that he has, because the tennis team, he did evasive maneuvers on Alex Bell. A car came into our lane around the corner and he did evasive maneuvers and saved all of us. So not the first time, but just a very special driver.
Yes, and I think, I think what we need to keep in mind too, I mean, we're all doing evasive maneuvers driving a car, but this is driving the big yellow box, the bus. So it's even more significant, so thank you.
It sounds like we need to hire him as a driver's ed instructor. For an high school, or he doesn't do that probably. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, we're gonna go out and get some pictures of him with his award.
Well, thank you guys for coming out. Thank you guys. Thank you Kathy and Bridgette and Nikki. So I just wanted to thank you guys. Thank you Andrea for reaching out to me an hour after it happened. I still have flashbacks to it. I still dream about it, but I appreciate your email. It meant the world to me. So my students are what I'm here for, so...
You made a world to us, too.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you guys. Thank you.
All right. We'll continue on. It's just terrific. Everything we get news about like that is awesome. Item eight is comments from our treasure regarding a couple of items. Mr. Sloan?
I ask that the board approve items A, 8A and 8B as presented.
Okay, it's a motion and a second. Any comments, Mr. Sloan?
These are the reports for 11 months, July through May, and looking to end the year in good shape compared to the forecast that was prepared back in November. So close out our books June 30 and then begin the new fiscal year 24 and once we get to July, but I think we're ending well as we wrap up this year.
All right. Any questions anybody has? Who we go? All right. Call her up, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right. Item number nine, Mr. Barry.
Good evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the listed personnel items 9A through 9I.
All right. Just a motion and a second, please.
A motion.
Seven.
Comments, sir? Yeah, no, three. All right. Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right. Item number nine, Mr. Barry.
Good evening. Superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education accept the ratification of the administrative contracts to listed administrators for the period of time indicated.
Okay, just need a motion and a second, please.
A motion.
Seven.
Comments, sir? Yeah, no, three. All right. Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right. Item number 10 is...
Superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education accept the ratification of the administrative contracts to listed administrators for the period of time indicated.
Okay, just need a motion and a second, please.
Seven.
Second.
Mr. Barry or Dr. Tom, anyone do you have a comment on this?
So I'd like to welcome Heather Davis. She is taking over as our new high school principal or assistant principal, sorry, replacing Jason Isner who is leaving to be a principal. Congratulations again, Jason, who's in the audience. And then we have Michelle. She actually lives in the community. She's gonna be our new school psychologist and we're looking forward to having both of these administrators on our team.
All right, very good. Welcome to the district. And Mr. Sloan, call her up, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
All right. Item 11, Mr. Sloan?
I ask that the board adopt the temporary appropriation resolution at the fund level for fiscal year 2023, 2024 as presented.
Okay, just need a motion and a second.
A motion.
Seven.
Any comments, Mr. Sloan?
This is the one piece of, piece of paper that I gave you a bit ago. It's just the starting budget. All districts across state have to do a temporary appropriation resolution before July 1. So this is just our starting budget for next school year. The main item in there is the general fund budget near the top and the numbers for the general fund are the exact same numbers that were in the five-year forecast that we approved in May.
All right, fair enough. We'll have a couple of others if you would, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, so that pretty much concludes the business part of this meeting. We're gonna talk about some other things before we adjourn, but that's all the yeses and those for the most part. Next item, we're gonna go through the agenda here is our student rep. Now, she isn't here. Nadia McKee, she'll be a senior this coming school year. Obviously has things going on this summer, so she's not with us tonight, but I do wanna just take a second since we have so many people here and hopefully folks that'll watch this later. She's one of, or we are one of four districts in this county that even have student reps. And as you can see, if she was here, she actually sits up here with us, which we are the only district that, well, no, we're not. North Mac does that, too. They have their student reps that live there. But anyway, she is a great asset for us and like I said, she'll be a senior, which will be serving as a student rep for two years with us and hopefully we'll find a good replacement for her next year when we throw out the applications for students to join us as student rep. So she isn't here tonight, though, so we won't hear from her. We'll move on to committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report since our last meeting? We're just moving around a little. All right, we'll go to comments from the superintendent.
So we often say phones down, eyes up. Janine has a little saying that she likes to say at a lot of her updates and most recently, this past week, I've read a lot of information about kids being hit by cars, being out at birthday parties and things like that. Recently, one was one of our mental health therapist's sons. I don't know if you saw that, but it was in the paper and she got a news report today. So she works at the intermediate school. Very sad situation, 15 years old. Please drive slow. That is the most important thing that I can say is drive slow. I just, every time I turn on the news and I see it, it just breaks my heart. So it hit really close to them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Sloan, any comments tonight, sir? Let's pass the mic.
Regarding the, you know, the new state budget will start July 1. The Ohio House of Representatives, they voted not to concur with this, with the Senate's version. So they're here in the last few weeks in June, there'll be a conference committee, kind of a reconciliation process between the Senate and the House and the governor for those three, you know, for those three groups to come to consensus for a state budget that will start July 1. So we'll, once we, you know, we can kind of look at the details once we have our next meeting in July. So now we're, it's kind of like a wait-and-see mode and that's it.
Just before we keep going, I, since again, there's so many people here, we're passing the microphone around because the microphones were supposed to have some of us backwater, right, still? We almost have it all, but we've been in this building since...
A year.
Yeah, 12 months ago, just about. And so everybody here knows just how bad things can be backward wise, well, this is a good example of something where, so at least we can hopefully be heard on any video that people might watch. We have at least this microphone, but it's not ideal, so please pardon us if I have to pass it, but I'd like everybody as a candy to be heard because otherwise it's tough to hear if you're watching something later on video. All right, so next we have the education association is going to speak. They've asked to share and we'll go ahead and have them do that here rather than waiting for the comment section at the end. So all of those folks who came to speak with us, if you're up.
Hi. My name is Anna Tremble and I am the Spanish teacher at the high school. So I put together a little presentation with some of my data. I'm not sure if anybody, is this the clicker?
Yes.
Yeah. Which button do I, any of them?
The left.
Okay. Okay, so this is, yeah, this is for like the year from my classroom. So one of my classroom rules this year that ended was that no smartphones were allowed in the class without teacher permission, just following our district guidelines. And I tried to document by sending either documentation or referral for cell phone use. These are some of my results that were divided by semesters. Now, it is very under documented because sometimes I did not have the time to pursue it 100%. So the blue column represents semester one. So I had a few referrals, if you notice, from, from the, the first one are the total referrals or documentations that I sent to the office. And the second column is the smartphones. So it's about 44% of the referrals that I sent throughout the first semester were related to smartphones. On the second semester, referrals increased, which is kind of like normal if you, you know, if you're familiar with how high school works. It increased like almost by twice of the referrals and if you notice, it became 57% of the referrals that I sent or documentation was smartphones. One of the, also the items was the failure rates because a lot of what I see in the classroom is that as the cell phones increase and my students start watching videos on it, then their, their, their grades start just dipping. So I put, if you guys get this link, there's actually a show, I'm not gonna show it, but it is, it is a digital nation and it is a research from MIT students in how like even our smartest students in the country, how the process works in terms of the time that they need to multitask. All my students think that they're very great at multitasking, but the reality is that their brain needs certain amount of time to process the information and put it in their permanent side instead of just, you know, that's why everybody's seeing that situation with students, even professors in colleges. So some of the issues that I'm seeing is also like sometimes our parents don't know our protocols and I'm gonna put in a couple of incidents that we talked to, that my students told me about throughout the year. So sometimes our parents don't follow the protocols and sometimes our parents don't know that their children are violating our protocols. We have certain procedures that we follow in order to keep students safe and supported. So one of the incidents that I thought was very, very eye-opening is that I had a student and he, we were discussing the cellphone policy and he said that, that his mom called to let him know a really bad news about his grandmother. She kept calling until he picked up. He was in the middle of class and when he found out the news, because he ended up picking up the phone, he found out that his grandmother had, had a stroke. And so he starts crying, he gets out of the class and the teacher has to leave the class to go comfort him. And we discussed and I said, you know, we have certain procedures in school meant for this type of situations. And so if our procedures would have been followed, we would have had a support staff to give him the news in a safe space and it wouldn't be a shocking to him. Another incident was I had a student that her mom kept texting her and picked her up during lunch and she would come in late to my classroom, fourth period. And I always wondered if we had an incident where there's a fire or something, we would think that the student was still in the cla, in school and we couldn't know where she was. And so this, this is created by the students having a cellphone and sometimes, you know, it's very convenient for parents, but sometimes it affects us in different ways and their children as well. I did put a little article that I read not that long ago. There's a few key points, but like the, at the end, the students are all coming up to describe how them having a cellphone later in life in high school has actually helped them to not create that addiction to their phone and they describe it in different ways. There is a teacher that is also like talking about like when students are having their cellphone and what he is seeing is what we're noticing in the classroom, which is not really that they're less engaged, they're now withdrawn. We're seeing that with COVID where I have some students that don't even communicate with their peers and they're just in their own bubble. So my personal take is that, you know, it's, it's not just a West Carrollton problem. I think that there's a lot of teachers that are struggling with this in, in youth and I see it with my own children. I had to fight with them not to give them a cellphone until they were in high school and it was a fight. So sometimes it's really affecting the way that our students are learning and in the classroom. I think that's, that's pretty much my presentation and there's the link if you guys are interested in checking out the articles on the, on the show.
Hello, my name is Emily McGuff. I just finished my eighth year, getting into my ninth year at West Carrollton, my interim, my 14th year of teaching. So I have seen like, obviously like the, the entire spectrum of when cell phones became more of something that were in the classroom rather than flip phones, which I got when I was a junior in high school and I wasn't allowed to take it in school, back in our day. Obviously the times have changed. So first I would just like to thank everybody who is here because obviously I think everybody who is here is for the students, whether we have differing opinions or not on what we're talking about, the whole reason you're here is because you care. Our focus is the students, but their focus needs to be learning. And I think that's where we're coming from as teachers a lot in supporting the cellphone stuff. We've all tried to have some type of semblance of control in the classroom, putting down the cell phones and things, but as Miss Tremble mentioned, there is an addiction, there is definitely a connection to those phones. My daughter's eight, she got, she would beg me for a phone, she would do whatever she needed to to get that phone, but obviously she's eight, she's not ready. And if she did have one, she would start to develop that connection with the phone like you had mentioned where they do develop an unhealthy addiction to them. It is a constant distraction which does directly inhibit their ability to process information and learn that information. It doesn't just obviously negatively impact their learning capability, but it also impacts their mental health. We know that there's an addiction there, but it also is something they never can step away from. And again, I know back in my day, I know, but we had, we were able to walk away. If, when I was getting bullied at school or when I was having issues in school and I left, I could walk away. Or when I was in the classroom, I could walk away. They can't walk away. That social media and everything is always going off. They're never off the clock as it is. And it makes me think, if you haven't, if you ever had a cellphone, you have like the location stuff running in the background, it's like draining your battery constantly, that's what's happening to them. Their battery is being drained constantly. And I know I have some wonderful babies in the front row who, you guys might have the personal responsibility to be able to put your phones away, but unfortunately that's just not the majority that we're seeing. You can't walk away. So some things obviously have to change. We are having an issue, as Miss Tremble pointed out, it's not just a West Carrollton problem, it is a worldwide issue. It's something that's constantly changing and so as things are constantly changing, we have to be able to adapt and change what we're doing to try to meet the kids where they are. If they have a cellphone attached to their arm 97% of the time, we have to try to find a way to reach them and maybe that's actually removing the cellphone. Obviously there are benefits of cell phones. I love mine, I have it with me 90% of the time, right? But the negatives here are outweighing the benefits. They are no longer able to remove themselves from the cellphone and if they can't make the boundaries themselves, well, again, I know there are exceptions, while they can't make the boundaries themselves, we have to be able to help them make those boundaries so they are able to reach their highest potential. Thank you.
Hello. First of all, thank you to the members of the board for letting us speak tonight. Thank you to administration for letting us speak our piece. And I also want to thank, I'm so sorry, my phone just hung up. Oh, no, hold on just a second. I'll put it on silent. I also want to thank the students and families for coming tonight and I know that some of my students are here and we might not be on the same side of the issue, but I am very proud of you for getting up and sharing your voice. So I'm glad some of that is being instilled upon you. My name is Shelley Arnett and I currently teach at the middle school. Stop texting me. I teach language arts at the middle school. Next year I'll be teaching seventh and eighth grade. Prior to that, I taught for five years at the high school. So I've seen how cell phones are used, both at the high school and the middle school level. A few years back, I'd say about five or six years ago when I was working at the high school, we pushed for cell phones in the classroom. We actually, as teachers, wanted the students to be able to use their phones in the classroom and encourage them to bring their phones to use for educational games such as Kahoot or Quizlet or to look up information on topics being discussed in class. We wanted students to have access to technology in the classroom and at that time, this was the only supplemental technology we could go to. Luckily, today, every middle school and high school teacher has a Chrome card in their classroom, so there is no longer the need for students to bring cell phones to the classroom anymore to have access to that technology. We, unfortunately, we all experienced a major disruption in our lives in 2020, but certainly our students felt it the most. Unable to attend school in person was detrimental to their social and mental well-being and their devices became a place of refuge, as I'm sure it did for many of us. But we now need to focus on closing the learning gap as well as continuing to put emphasis on students' social, emotional health. And my fellow staff and I believe one of the best ways to achieve these goals is to have students disconnect from these devices so they can engage in learning without the distraction that can sometimes control their emotional state, whether they are waiting for a like from their latest social media post, sending a text to a friend, receiving a text from a friend or family member, or being shown a screenshot of Snapchat someone posted earlier that day saying their outfit is ugly. When a student's phone is nearby, they're waiting for that constant gratification or sometimes that unfortunate humiliation that could offset the rest of their day. According to the National Center for Educational Statistics, in 2020, 77% of schools in the United States had implemented some type of cellphone ban. Having students put their phones in yonder pouches will eliminate the students' need to constantly check for updates and will alleviate the negatives that come with social media use. In May of 2023, the Surgeon General claims children are exposed to harmful content ranging from violent and sexual content to bullying and harassment. And far too much social media, far too many, for too many, social media use is compromising their sleep and valuable in-person time with family and friends. I have seen the negative effects having cell phones in the classroom has had on my students. Even the ones who abide by the rules are distracted by those who do not. Phones have been used to cheat by taking pictures of their work and sending it to others, to coordinate fights or trips to vape in the bathroom, to listen to music with an earbud hidden under their hood and not paying any attention to the lesson being delivered by the teacher. And I've also noticed times where yelling, cussing and throwing a fit happens when the phone is being taken from them. Please know that all teachers have landline phones in their rooms and we often give out our phone extensions on our syllabi. Students are more than welcome to use these phones if they need lunch money or need to see if they can stay after school for a meeting or practice, or if they could get a ride home with someone else. But allowing students to keep their phones on them just for this reason is really allowing them to have access to all the media that is disengaging them from the real world, hindering their educational experience and leading them to higher levels of anxiety and depression. And I know they stopped texting me, but I was trying to prove a point that as I was up here speaking, much like students are in the classroom with their phones in front of them but not using them, they're constantly getting updates, messages, likes, dislikes and things that they constantly, as soon as it goes off, they want to check it, they want to see it. So I believe that by having these yonder pouches, we will eliminate a lot of that problem. Thank you.
Good evening. I would first like to thank the board, staff and families that were able to attend the board meeting. My name is Erin Donlin and I teach seventh grade English at the middle school. Each school year brings new challenges and changes and hopes for a safer environment for our students. Throughout the 2022-2023 academic school year, students were asked to keep their cell phones in their lockers powered off. Per our student handbook, page 16 through 17, the cellphone policy states, "Personal communication devices or PCD. The use of PCD to engage in non-education-related communications is expressly prohibited. When use of PCDs is prohibited, the devices must be powered completely off, i.e. not just placed on viral or silent mode, and stored out of sight. Students may not use PCDs on school property or at school-sponsored activities to access Per our student handbook, page sixteen through seventeen, the cellphone policy states, personal communication devices or PCD. The use of PCD to engage in non-education-related communications is expressly prohibited. When use of PCDs is prohibited, the devices must be powered completely off, i.e., not just placed on vibrate or silent mode and stored out of sight. Students may not use PCDs on school property or at school-sponsored activities to access or view internet websites that are otherwise blocks to students at school. Many students neglected this boundary that was in their student handbook. Teachers like myself and those behind me had the conversation multiple times each day. May you please put your phone in your locker? Depending on the student, the answer varied. While some students listened and calmly respected my request, there were countless times I was spoken to with disrespect and profanities. Some students would ask the question, what if something bad happens and I need to call my parents? A fair question, but as I tell all of my students, one which is in the room, one of my many responsibilities as your teacher is to protect you and all of those in my class. This includes reaching out to guardians should a situation warrant communications. If I was lucky enough to have one of your children in my class, I hope that they can attest to the safety that was upheld in my classroom. When students neglect the middle school no cellphone policy, the result in a loss of curricula, curriculum time, I apologize, and results in a removal of privilege. In this case, their phone, our personal communication device, our administrators, Eric Crissick and Amy Kinser in my case, would then need to come to my class and confiscate the phone or phones. Referrals then need to be written followed by a phone call home. This may not seem like a big deal to most, but that means roughly ten minutes of classroom time is instruction time lost. The school year is one hundred and eighty days long. If I removed one cellphone per day, that's one and a quarter days of curriculum time lost. I'm not able to teach during that time. Other conversations that I've had with my students include their fear of videos or pictures being taken of them and distributed throughout the high school or online without their consent. This topic in particular was in abundance. Our students are brilliant and they are scared. These pouches are not to deter students from feeling safe in our schools, but as many students know, their safety is a top priority. These pouches are to protect our students' privacy, hinder students using their personal devices in negative ways, and allow students' peace of mind to focus and not fear the latest TikTok challenge or again, being posted online without consent. Many of you follow the West Carrollton Talks Facebook page and have seen some of my students have videos posted of them without their knowledge or consent. This tormented my students and most likely some of your own children. Can you imagine if we were able to use our resources to eliminate that kind of bullying? These bags won't make these challenges disappear, but they will aid in bettering students' safety and allow your teachers to support their students' curriculum rather than micromanaging their personal devices. Thank you for your time.
So am I, uh, tablet here when dark comes, I have to. All right, so we are, do we have anyone here from class staff? Uh, central office staff, Mr. Bear, any comments there?
No.
Mrs. Ty?
Yeah, I will say that, um, our end of the year bullying, harassment, and intimidation report is, um, I believe it's posted online. If not, tomorrow, I'm not sure. But, um, we do, we implemented our new process. And so you'll be able to see, um, on that report that we have now, we have broken out the number of reported incidents versus confirmed. Those that were reported and investigated and then the number that were confirmed. So between, and I have, I do have the summary, we had, um, sixteen confirmed incidences of either bullying, harassment, or intimidation, all which have varying definitions.
Sixteen district-wide?
District-wide, yeah. So, so for instance, harassment could be if a racial slur is used against someone, that's harassment versus bullying because harassment involves, so protect this last. Um, so there are unique definitions associated with each one of those, but we did have, um, let's see, uh, twenty-two, thirty-five incidents investigated and, what did I just say?
Sixteen.
Thank you, everyone.
You mentioned the new process and you're referring there to the form that was kind of created that's being used district-wide, right?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it was really a process. Um, so there is an investigation form which I believe you all saw a copy of, um, back maybe in February-ish. Um, so there is a, a form that we use to record all of the information. There are specific questions that need to be, uh, asked of victims and, um, perpetrators, so to speak. Um, alleged perpetrators, yeah. Um, and, and then the findings and whatever consequences, if any, are imposed.
Right, very good. Uh, before I ask Ms. Jones to share any comments, I just want to tell everybody, the ten or twelve years I've paid attention to school boards and the years I've sat here, the bullying thing's been a big deal to me and not that it's not to everybody else, but, um, I've took some time and researched districts and of the sixteen in this county, less than half of them even report anything on their website. Not that districts bigger than us, smaller than us, they don't even say anything about this. And the few that do, of the sixteen, only three of them are up to date like us with, with stuff at least from twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And three or four others who may have data hits from like twenty nineteen before COVID started. So, uh, even though, you know, you may question the numbers, you may question the data that you see on the report, I'm here to tell you, a lot of districts don't even put anything out there. And perhaps if you call them, they'll share something with you, I don't know, but I like to see things and, and be able to find stuff without having to call a principal or call the superintendent and, and at least be able to have some kind of feedback that you can access. In this district, uh, for all our faults, I think we do a good job of, I really appreciate the efforts been put into doing this and certainly uh, having something published that people can go look at is, is, uh, it's not something you're going to find everywhere. So I appreciate that. Ms. Jones, anything?
Um, I just want to say thank you to all the teachers for coming out and, um, saying what you did. It was very well presented and very informative. Um, and then I, I'm excited about, um, National Night Out. That was a lot of fun last year and, uh, I didn't, this was my first one last year, so, uh, um, lots of great, great food, water rides, um, and a huge turnout. So I just encourage everybody to support that event. And a pony, that's right. It's free, it's free, everything's free. Food's free, everything's free. They're doubling the size of the rides this year. They're also doing little kid, um, bounce houses and adult things. Um, so I was told at the planning meeting today, if you watch some kind of water thing with, look, that adults do that falls get thrown at you and stuff, they will have that as well. So it's supposed to be a lot of fun. It's, um, always the second Tuesday of August or the first Tuesday of August. It's August first and it's from six to eight. Food and everything's free for the kids and the police will, um, go down the water sides and have water balloon fight. It's just so much fun. And it's the kickoff of the back-to-school event literally.
Mr. A?
Uh, yeah, I just want to congratulate Erin and all of the drivers for that matter. You know, I've, you know, I've been in charge of the bus drivers for twenty-seven years here and I get a lot of pride when it comes to that staff. They work hard, they put in a lot of hours of training and, um, they care about the kids. And, um, I would put my kids on a yellow bus over a car any day, uh, going to and from school is the safest way to go. And, uh, it's the professional drivers like Erin and the staff that Kathy, Nikki, and Tricia run over there now that just, uh, keep schools going. And I'm just really proud of the job they all do over there.
Appreciate the, all the sharing. So here near the end of the regular meeting that we're in right now, we are going to have a work session following our, uh, we'll adjourn for that, right? We'll adjourn the meeting and then do the work session. So we'll adjourn in a moment. We're going to have, uh, board comments and, um, I am going to, I'm going to make a comment at the end, but I'm going to take a moment before I pass the mic to Nate and just, uh, mention a couple of things about the bags. Oh, I thought this was. This wasn't the folks you shared? Oh, I apologize, I apologize. All right, so I'm apologize. I'm getting ahead. I thought this was the same, uh, individual, my bad. All right, so, uh, for, uh, public comments, we do have, uh, comments from several folks. Victoria Bab, and I can't read all these names all. Rashidi, you want to come, come on up here? Uh, we're going to share about the, uh, the phone pouches. You guys, take it away.
Hi, um, we're all members of the senior student body student council and, um, senior student class council. Um, and we just want to speak on our experiences in the school using technology and some concerns we have with the yonder bags. So I think one of our biggest concerns is emergencies pertaining to like getting picked up and things with sports. I was in marching band for three years, um, two of those being in high school and things changed coming back from football games. We got back really late. Sometimes I needed things before I could go out to practice and I had no other way of communicating with my parents. Um, especially if my dad was at work, I didn't have his work number memorized, which part of that could be my fault. But it was easier to call him from my phone than to go down to the office interrupting my class time, which I enjoyed the morning. Um, and so I think just having my phone probably would have made it a lot easier. Um, and then language barriers, um, we have quite a few students who speak different languages in the school and it's very hard to get interpreters because it's very hard to find normal teachers to get substitutes. So finding interpreters who can come down, interpret an entire phone call for a student who, between a student and a parent who, the parent may be upset because they're trying to speak with somebody who's not necessarily understanding them. And I think at least on the side of like Spanish-speaking students, we do have Spanish teachers, but why should we have to take them away from their class period to come down and interpret something that could have been done if a parent was speaking to a student themselves? Um, and then back to like the communication with extracurriculars, um, we're all part of student council. We use remind. Actually, I got a remind text right before this from our student council advisor, um, watching us look for this. And it's for things like the blood drive. She'll text us and say, this is who I have working at this time. Um, to call over the announcements is a bigger interruption than to just send us a text that like, I mean, I'm not always looking at my phone, but if I know I'm expecting a text or if there's something that I need to text her about, I know my phone is there for me to do that. Um, and then we, yeah. And, um, a lot of kids also rely on emails to be able to reach out with teachers and with assignments and stuff like that. Um, now I know all the teachers have brought up having Chromebooks in the classroom and I know all the high school teachers at least can say, our wifi is really slow. Um, our wifi, it has taken over two class periods for me to get on websites for classes that I've needed, which it's kind of hard to do when I have an assignment due and my teacher's like, okay, you have class time to work on it. And during that class time, I was unable to get on the website. Um, and sometimes when the internet goes down, so do teachers' phones. I've been in multiple classes where my teachers have said, oh yeah, I'd let you use my phone, but, um, it's down right now, just like the Chromebooks. So I think, yeah, like who, who's going to communicate if we have no phones at all, including teacher phones? Um, and then personally, I have used my hotspot multiple times to connect to the Chromebook. Um, my hotspot allows me to share it with three people, including myself. So I have told other students, hey, I have two open spots if anyone wants to connect in my hotspot. Um, and then that gives three students, including myself, the opportunity to do some work, but that still interrupts everybody else from doing their work. Um, and then some of the safety stuff, um, we had a tornado earlier this school year where we had to leave our classroom and go into another classroom, um, and both of my parents were at work. I have, um, a little farm in Germantown, sorry guys, I don't want to share that. Um, and as somebody who like owns a lot of animals, that's a big concern for me is if they're going to be okay. When storms come, it gets really bad out there and I always text my parents because my dad is not always the most unconscious person when it comes to the thinking straight. So sometimes I have to be like, hey, I need you to go out there. I need you to like make sure everything's okay. Um, we also have animals at our house that require like heating lamps, stuff like that, where I have to tell my parents, hey, if, if I'm going to be late after school, I need somebody there to make sure they're okay. Um, I also have two siblings who live in Dayton. Um, my younger sister had a lot of bullying issues and there were a lot of times where she'd call me at school crying and say she just needs someone to talk to and I was that person for her because she was scared to talk to my parents and scared that they were going to go to the school and say something, which is what needed to be done. But while I was being interrupted from my class time, I was also saving her a lot of headaches and a lot of problems involving other students that her school was not handling. Um, so while I do think that like the yonder pouches can be helpful in some ways, I also think that they kind of take away from other aspects of safety and, um, communication, even inside the school between other students and t- teachers and students.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, you said your sister goes to school in Dayton. Does she go to one of the schools that has a yonder pouch?
She does not. She went to Mad River, um, last school year, but she's new school since then.
Thank you.
Before the next person speaks, I want to apologize. I didn't handle this transition well at all. Uh, there are two things I want to share with you before you guys continue. When you're doing public comments during the meeting, you have five minutes to speak. Um, I, uh, you pretty much took, you did perfect. You almost did it right at five minutes. And so if you get close to a minute from the five minutes, I may say something to you just to kind of let you know, hey, we're near close to five minutes. But otherwise, you did, you did terrific. I didn't have to say anything, but I wanted to make sure the next person knew there was actually a time limit to this. So, go right ahead.
Okay, so, um, we're bringing up like all the problems with putting our phones in pouches, but we do have like other solutions that could be helpful where you still would technically be taking the kid's phone away while they're in the learning area, but when they're in the halls or if they did need access to it, without having to use a magnet or go through the, like, the teachers, they could just, um, access it. So basically like, I don't know if you've seen, we use calculator bags actually in a lot of our classes during tests, so we'll go put our phone up. And it's never really like a problem. And also I feel like if it does become a problem with students and the teacher says something to the administrators, it should be taken care of. Where in a lot of like places like last year, like nothing was like dealt with, I guess, properly and that could be part of the problem too. Um, they can be, yonder bags could definitely be a lot more useful if they were used like in a more effective way. So for students who continue to ignore teachers or instructors or disregard the rules, so if we did use lockbox or baskets or something during learning time and then if we needed to do stuff on our phones for projects or contact a teacher, because I personally use email on my phone a lot and it'll come straight through and I won't have to wait for a Chromebook to load, send the message and sit on the Chromebook waiting, interrupting my time with my teacher when I could just check after class in the halls if my teacher, um, emailed me back. Also, we have stuff for if we come in late or, um, to sign up to see a counselor, we use codes for that, which you scan on your phone. And that is how we get in contact with our counselors. It's either through that or email. And if we are late, that is how we sign in without having to wait in a line to get to class, which would waste more of our learning time if we're waiting in a long line to get to class. And, um, these are examples and images and, um, it's a lot cheaper also as well. Um, but those are just other, um, alternative solutions that would be a lot easier because I feel like with the pouches, people aren't going to listen and that's going to turn into a huge problem in the middle of class or they're going to cut them and become damaged and it could just turn into a huge problem. Okay, so I think, well, while we, the teachers kind of focus on the negative aspects of phones, I feel like phones also do have positive usage in school. Like Victoria said, QR codes to me with counselors. If a kid's having a bad day, they can easily sign up to me with their counselor. Or me personally, I've emailed Ms. Auberman many times, like urgently wanting to talk to her. And many kids, maybe they don't bring cash to school, so they contact their parents and you can get on Pay School Central and upload money to your lunch account. As well as filling out, like Victoria also said, filling out forms for late attendance, you don't have to wait in a line, interrupt more of your teaching time. And then, well, really like for grades, teachers don't tell you like in class, like it's not their requirement to tell you in class what your grade is like first thing. So Power School, you do receive many updates as well as many times teachers have marked me absent and I've So Power School, you do receive many updates as well as many times teachers have marked me absent and I've been at school. And it's just been an easy way for me to email the attendance, the attendance secretary and just let her know that I am at school and that there was marked wrong. And grades, many of us freak out about our grades. Like if you're a straight A student, you want to know immediately like, "Oh, why is my grade out of B?" So you can easily talk to your teacher when you see her the next time and ask her about your grade. Many teachers do do online assignments that require you to use a photo, upload photos to the computer, many different things that you use your phone to upload. And then in the spirit store, if you want to buy something, you can always use Apple Pay. Okay, and many students do work as we're getting older, so... Communication with employers, a significant amount of students work to pay for gas, car payments and help with bills. So shifts may open up, students may have to call off. And students will need to communicate with employers and parents before the end of the school day. Because work for many students, it is a priority and they are required to work because they, maybe they need to help their mom out. Their mom may not be able to pay for the, like if they need stuff for sports, for cheer. If they just, their moms do not have an adequate amount of money to help them pay. Students do work. And then teacher communication through email and Remind. Communication of a sub coming for the day. I know Ms. Cawcroft, she was our CCP English teacher. She always let us know if there was a sub coming in, just to prepare us, like just letting us know. Because sometimes subs, if it's like a last minute sub, they always, they, they might not know what you're, what you need to do. So that's why teachers upload it on Google Classroom and let us know what we have to do for that day. And then if there's a field trip, you may receive information or meaning on the time and place. Also through your phone, you can get it through email and Remind instant without having to interrupt your class. And then many times, oh, like I said, a sub may, may be lost on instructions to students. So it's just super easy for a teacher while being at home or dealing with her situation. She can just quickly update us and just remind us what we need to do. Clubs and sports, I think this is a big issue because most coaches do contact us directly. Like we have group chats, group me, stuff like that. So it's just way easier for them to contact us personally and let us know if we're meeting at a later time, what we're wearing, stuff like that. So I just think while phones can have negative impacts, they also have many, many positive usage that affects our school environment sometimes. So I just believe that phones, phones can be used in a positive way. But like the teacher said, I think it just depends on the way we control it. And I think we have many different alternatives that can be used to not punish all the kids in a way that will be impacting like our contact methods and stuff like that.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Melan Dillon. And earlier this year, I, my little sister ended up passing away of cancer. And she had been going through it for two years. And I wanted to talk about how like for the whole two years, my phone, I'm an honor student. You can ask all of my teachers, my, my main focus was my work. I am actually at the top of my class and I still am, even going through this situation. But I would prioritize my work by even, uh, going to use my phone for looking on Google Classroom during my lunch and my advisory so that I could do my work and catch up on my work for those days that I would miss. Or I would even, so like when my little sister was getting her first surgery, I went to school because I knew the impact of how many days, like missing the school days would impact my education and how far I would be behind. So when she had her surgery, having my phone there just to get updates when I knew like I could. Knowing that, I was okay with doing my schoolwork and focusing on that at that time. If I knew that I wouldn't be able to get updates, I feel like as if I would have wanted to be there and wanted to like skip those things, even though it wasn't that I needed to. And I want to say that no one, nothing will prepare you for when you get a phone call from saying that a loved one has passed or a loved one is not doing so well. Although administrators could help to come in, I'm a person who doesn't want a lot of people to know my business. So, and I want to be able to feel comfort. So when I got that call from my mom telling me that I should get up to the hospital, I took time and I asked my teacher if I could take the call. She said yes. And I was able to listen and talk to my mom and help her through it, not only with me, but help her because it is a hard situation. And I was able to look at my teacher. I was fine because I knew that I was comforted by my mother who I love very much. And I looked at her and I was like, "Hey, can I go to the office so that I can talk to them and we can figure it all figured out?" I feel as if there are circumstances where we can have a phone and figure out ways that we can just kind of go with it smoothly and make it easier transition without taking the phones away completely. I also want to say like in conclusion, we would like to, the board to know that we're very concerned with like the potential of the policy of the yonder badge. And we would like to like, to take in the consideration of the issues and address previously as well as other ways to monitor the phone usage. Overall, I just think we are fighting for what we believe in and just hope that we can figure something out.
Thank all of you guys for sharing. The teachers and students, it is not easy. Especially with a room that's full, because it's usually not. It's usually four of them over there and us and a couple folks in the back. Wonderful folks who helped us film this. And that's usually it. So kudos to you because this is about the fullest, about maybe the musical that was full of this. Musical audition, musical. Kindergarten, yeah? Yeah, a couple times. But I really appreciate you coming and sharing. And I, before we do the board comments, I'm going to make a couple of comments about these bags. I don't really get online and look at Facebook posts. I used to. I used to start, I started Higher Kids Matter, if you guys ever heard of that. So I'm not like foreign to Facebook. But ever since I've been sitting here, I don't look at it much anymore. But whatever it is that's being said or not said, the board is going to vote on this in August. We're not voting tonight. We're not voting in July. Unfortunately, because as many of you can understand, schedules and everything else, all five of us aren't going to really be here until our meeting in August. Joe's missing tonight. I do not want this to be a vote without five people. So whatever happens, and I really can't tell you what that's going to be, we're going to do this or not do this. I can tell you that one of the reasons we're having a work session is because we're a board that is not supposed to, as some communities have done in the past, actually talk to each other and have meetings outside in the public. We don't do that. So if we want to know what each other thinks, we have to have a work session. So you will hear some of questions that we might have about this, our own comments about it if you stick around for that. But we are voting on this in August. So in this meeting, everybody who came to share, the students who came and fell with these green slips, if you do want to speak to us about this in July, we are, we take the moment to do this now. We are changing again because of our schedules and the fact that in, on the 12th of July, which is currently the date listed on the website for our next meeting, both Leslie and I would not be here for that. And rather than have a meeting with three people and have to ask, and I know Gerald Buick, who's been president before, but rather than ask one of these three to coordinate the meeting, we are going to move the date to the 19th of July. So we will be published online so folks can know that that, we're going to have a meeting in July. We're just going to move it from July 12th to July 19th. So make an announcement tonight and that's so we can all be present and attend that meeting and have... So we'll still just have four of us, but I'll be here to make sure that I don't put that burden on one of the other three to sit here and talk about this. So that being said, just want to reiterate again, if you do want to speak about this in July, on the 19th, you're welcome to do that. We are never going to stop you from coming and speaking, your piece and your mind. And you have a five minute time limit, which you all have read with. And so that would be the only caveat, just make sure you keep it to five minutes. But you'll always be welcome to come here and share. And it matters, which you say. It matters the points you make. We all listen to it. We make notes. I actually, most of the time, within a few days, these videos are posted online. So I can't always remember what is said. So it's really nice to be able to go back and look at it again and kind of remember some of the things that were said. So just know that. So July, then in August, which I believe the August 2nd, our first meeting in August is the planned meeting dates for voting on this. So that if it does get voted to do it, gives the district enough time to get those moving in motion to be released. If it doesn't get voted or if there's some kind of alteration to this, that certainly allows time a couple of weeks before school start to make the dashes. So August 2nd will be on the agenda. That we will be something on the agenda regarding yonder bags. So if you do want to speak to us at that meeting, you are certainly welcome to do that as well. So just letting you know that. Right now, this is not being voted on today. We appreciate you coming and talking about it. So it's red, so I can tell I'm not projecting loudly enough.
In the August meeting, if you note in the beginning of the meeting, it says, "Comments to public relating to agenda items on the..." At that meeting, that vote for the yonder bag will be on the agenda. So the speaking will be at that period of time for that. If you have other things that you want to converse with us, then it will be at the later section.
So as you may remember, Ms. Corbett came up and we heard about you and the buses. Prior to her coming is the timeframe where you can speak about bags if you want. So you're really early in the meeting. So if you do want to talk about it, because it'll be on the agenda, you can speak about it very, very early. You don't have to wait an hour like you have to do, like they have to do. Just speak in general because it's not on the agenda yet. So for that, Nate, I wish I had a mic, but it's dead.
I don't like the mics anyways, so I'm happy to guide right before I come to talk. Before I start, is everyone staying for the work session or is this place going to be empty by the time? Because I, I hope everyone would stay and continue this conversation because it is really good on both sides. You know, I know, I usually have a thought in my mind at first and of course, things will change that thought multiple times. So I, I really appreciate both of you guys, both sides, right? Being able to come here and speak honestly about something that will really change the future of what can happen with education and, you know, allowance for students. So a few things before we talk about that, of course. Aaron and the other bus drivers that are just in the transportation department. I mean, I think it's well known that they are all fantastic people and Aaron especially. I just am so grateful for his quick reactions, his hard work. I just, I'm great, I'm grateful for that. Of course, I don't know if I mentioned in the last meeting, but Jason, I thank you for all that you have done. It's, it's really tough to see you go. I don't remember if I said something about it last time or not, but I'm just really grateful for you, Jason. So good luck with all that you do in your future. I know you're doing amazing work over there.
Thank you.
On top of that, me and Maddie, our student rep, are working on a giving closet. So I'm going to be talking to some people. I need, I, I need a closet in the high school. A big one if that. We're going to fill this bad boy up with all sorts of items. Hopefully, that's kind of our goal. Maddie might do a community project to kind of get some things. So if there's a student that does not have something like a bookbag, pencils, clothes, you name it. I mean, we want to have that opportunity for those students to be able to walk in, get what they need without any judgment, without any problems. We want to get that out and going. So I'm excited to be working with her. Hopefully, we can get that in.
The teacher store over by the STEM school that you guys can shop at for being educators.
Grand classroom, yeah.
Might suggest taking a visit there to help with the closet.
Absolutely, yeah.
Very good idea. So yeah, if anyone has a free closet in the high school, I know there's a lot of teachers out here. Somebody, I don't know. That's going to be the hardest part, I feel like, is going to find somebody with the space. We'll find that hopefully at some point. And other than that, most of my comments are going to be related to everything going on. So should I wait till the work session? Okay, so I'll, I'll wait to talk to you about that.
Well, I want to congratulate Aaron. I am not surprised. He is a very, very good driver for us and so are a lot of our drivers, all of them are. I always kind of very safe whenever I get on the bus to go to all of my tennis with the kids. They, a lot of times will sit in the audience and support the kids and they, they come back. We've had some bring treats for us. It's, it's, the sky's the limit with that much. They are great. And I do appreciate all of them and everything they do. Library's got a lot of programs going on. If you're wondering, can you get your kids out there reading, reading in summer? Today is the first day of summer. And with that comes summer sports. I know tennis, we were up there today at Wilson Park. We'll be up there the rest of this week, nine to 10 a.m. And Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday next week with a, on the following Wednesday, just to get going. But you can also get those final forms requirements done ahead of time with all the physicals and all those things that need to be turned in. And if you want to join summer, you want to do a fall sport, summer's a great time to get involved and get out there. I know all of us coaches, we welcome anyone that wants to come out. So I had seven girls this morning, which is awesome. We have seven more spots to fill. So do come out and support the teams. Thanks.
And I just want to thank everyone that came out tonight, students and teachers that have been put in insight on themselves and who such as really valuable information. So thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Two more things. I frankly, so first thing, I forgot to mention. I'll be quick. I'll be quick. First thing I want to mention, the city has all these cool things going on like concerts and stuff. If you could, be involved in your community. Definitely be out there, go to those concerts. I don't know any of the names, so I, I don't know. I heard they're good. I don't know. I listen to Weezer and stuff like that, so that's way out of my league. One is Arctic Clan.
The Taliban.
Yeah, sadly, there's no like Ozzy or anything coming through. But I heard they're all really good. So please look on their website, be involved in your community. That's what we need, more people that want to be involved, more people that want to do more. So that's one thing. And of course, I almost forgot my quote. What is this? What is this? So I had a quick quote. It's by Robert Schuler. And it's, "Problems are not stop signs, they're guidelines." And that's something that might be kind of expanded upon in our work sessions. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
All right. I can't believe you forgot the quote.
I know.
All right, so I will just share two quick things. The last meeting I shared, it's a lot of, especially with teachers in the world. There are a lot of folks here who know what Pyre Facts is. So we can, we have assistance program that helps hundreds of kids in this district. And the biggest donor to our budget is an organization that these people are crazy for Disney. It's a Disney on a Club that is actually one of three or four in the country to meet. And they have an event at Hope Hotel, which is basically outside of the Air Force Base. And they host a three day event, which really just looks like a Disney flea market. And flea market is not the right word because the stuff is really awesome. Bizarre is the right word. So if you love Disney stuff, they do this typically the second weekend in June next year. But they have a three day event. And they, a few years ago, they gave the proceeds of this event, because they're not the profit, to the Ronald McDonald House, which is across from Children's Hospital. And that's who they donated their profits to from the event. A few years ago, Ronald McDonald House made it, I guess, really difficult for them to do that. It gave them a lot of hurdles to go through. So as a result of that, one of their leaders, who is really good for Joe, he's on our board and also on Pyre Facts, wanted to meet. She reached out to him and said, "Hey, would you guys be willing to let us donate to your charity?" And we're not stupid. We didn't say no to that. We had no idea what kind of, of donation that we'd make, but certainly, we're never going to say no to that. So four years ago, when this started, they donated about five, six thousand dollars to us, which was... Um, four years ago, when this started, they donated about five, six thousand dollars to us, which was the biggest donor we would have, nobody donates that kind of money to us. Um, we do have very generous donations from many of the staff, so that's one of those donors, is just when you combine all the donations from teachers and staff in the district, some of which are in his room. But, um, this year, well, we'll back up. The biggest ever contribution we've had was a Montgomery County grant, ten thousand dollars, we got twice, and then the grant stopped, of course. Can't ever count on those things lasting forever, so we did receive that for two years though, and it was a county grant. Um, last year, Disney Honor gave nine thousand dollars to us. This year, a week ago, they made a Facebook live post, and they're donating twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars to us. And it's just, and that's about a third of our budget from one course. So, uh, I just say that to thank them publicly, uh, they, they, uh, they make these big, you know, the fake checks you get where people, they make one of those for us, so if you come and pack this coming year, uh, when we start packing in August, uh, throughout the school year, you're gonna see these big checks that come, that we put on the wall, because it's awesome that they're able to do this. Uh, but that's the single largest donation ever been to us, and we are so grateful for it. So, um, other than that, the only other thing I would, uh, would share is again, we have, uh, the the National Honor of the Cowboys first, and of course, our next meeting, which we are moving to July nineteenth, so please be here for that, but, uh, without any further ado, I'll take a motion and a second to. We don't have a journey?
No.
We'll just adjourn at the end of the work session? All right, so we'll, we'll take a few minutes, and we'll stop the recording, and we'll take, anybody that does want to leave, you can. If you want to hand it out for the work session, you can press on the bottom.